Okay. All right, is that one ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good afternoon, welcome to the January 22nd, 2005 Planning Board. It's a special meeting reviewing some articles. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. All voters will be conducted by roll call because Mr. Kitchener. Zoom attendees must use their real names to help for accurate minutes and also use your name and address when you are speaking. The chair will recognize participants and let you know when you can speak. Please unmute yourself and when you're not speaking online, public speakers will be granted three minutes and additional one minute thereafter. Please remember, that's it. So I'm going to do roll call of the planning board members. So John Kitchner?
Yeah.
Nat?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
And then alternate is Howard Matts. And then we're going to go through roll call of staff. Ms. Leslie Snell? Ms. Megan Trudell?
Here.
And Mr. Billy Saad?
Here.
Catherine Ansario is walking in as we speak. So that's perfect timing on her part. So. So can I get approval of the agenda, please?
Some move, sir.
By roll call, John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And Howard. Okay. So moving forward, let's, sorry, Megan, do you want to read this first part about the, the housing change, little act of 2020?
So that is on the memo for your reference. This was legislation adopted in 2020 that under certain criteria, the typical two-thirds voting threshold at town meeting, there are some pathways for that to be reduced to 50%. So I didn't expand in the articles on whether you should or shouldn't vote, but you need to include the quantum of vote in your motion if it's a 50%. So if it qualifies for 50%, I've identified that in the memo and I've identified the reason as to why it qualifies.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Question, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Acting. Is there more legislation since this started? Or is this just the original two-third versus 50?
It is, this has been the legislation since it started.
I'm just saying, this is like a refresher sort of thing.
Yep, it's just because they only look at it once a year and...
I think we should announce that because not everybody knows about this.
Yep.
And it is important, but it's, it also is confusing as to how do, how do we get there and how we arrive at it. So I think that's good that you're saying this. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, we are going to jump down to zoning articles proposed by the Nantica Planning Board for Nantica 2025 Annual Town Meeting. And we're going to move down to zoning map amendment R40 to ROH, zero fair street portion of. Megan, do you want to kind of walk us through this one?
Actually, if, if you wouldn't mind, just while I'm trying to pull everything up, if we could quickly just dispose of two things on, on the agenda. The zoning bylaw technical amendment for height limitations?
Oh.
And the zoning map amendment RC2 to CTEC for 3Ts Dell Circle. Those were two concepts that we had to, for advertising purposes, get them, get them into the legal ad, but since have decided they, they were not included on the warrant. So there's no action needed at this time, but just, we got to remove those from the agenda.
Okay, can I get a motion on that, please?
Some move, sir.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Howard? And the chair is an aye. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, now back to where we were.
That's okay.
And I would be an aye, Mr. Acting.
No, I'm sorry, geez, geez, geez. Thank you, sir. Out there, me.
Mr. Chair, you do have a hand raised right now.
Okay, can I?
I think, I think that looks like, that looks like a bit of a...
I thought you were telling me.
Yeah, he was on last night.
Yes.
Oh.
Can you bring me over on Zoom so I can see what the...
There was a, something happened.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Just so I can see hands. Okay, perfect, thank you. And attendees, okay, awesome, thank you. Okay. All right, so moving back to where I started. Zoning map amendment R40 to ROH, zero fair street portion of. Megan, do you want to lead us on that one, please?
Yep, sure. So this is a proposal to revert a portion of zero fair street back to ROH. When this was moved over in 2015, the entire parcel was included from ROH to R40. However, only a portion, lot seven here, was actually conveyed to the land bank. This lot shown as lot eight is actually owned by this person and was, should not have moved to R40. So we need to put them back into, into ROH. So it's only this section here, that's why it says a portion of Zero Fair Street.
Okay. Board members, any comments? I see a hand up from Tommy Rush. What is that?
Oh, again. That's, that's a spammer.
All right.
Last night, too.
He was on last night trying to tell us all about refurbishing.
Trying my quickest to get him out of there.
Not a problem, just like, I thought that's what I heard last night.
Yes, you did.
Okay, perfect. So anyone have any questions, comments, anything?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you, and second.
Okay, Nat, any motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay. Comments, thoughts?
I'll make a motion at this point, we send this off with a positive recommendation, quantum vote being two-thirds.
Yep, second.
Awesome, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye, thank you. Okay, moving on. We're moving on to zoning map amendment RC2 to R5, Surfside and My Comet. And this is located, like I said, RC2 to R5. So do we have any comments, questions, thoughts, anyone? Megan?
Let me just get the map going, it's a, it's a large graphic here, hold on. So this is the two parcels on the corner of Surfside Road and My Comet Avenue. The proposal is to rezone those to R5, which would, is what is abutting next door. We have reached out to the property owner and he didn't have questions about this.
Those are all residential. It's not like, that's downtown, okay.
Yep.
Yep. And I'm thrilled to see that we're moving ahead with our RC2 rezonings. So some of these are absolutely wonderful.
Yes. Okay, any comments, concerns? Anyone in the public?
Motion to close the public hearing then, sir.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye.
Motion to send this off with a positive recommendation, quantum vote being two-thirds.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye, thank you. Okay. Moving on to zoning map amendment RC2 to CTEC, Old South Road, AKA Van Gilder Ave.
So this is the, you may recall going through the Van Gilder subdivision maybe a year or two ago. At the time, we did discuss this throughout that, the course of that process, the rezone to CTEC, which the property owner is amenable to. In fact, the subdivision for this site restricts many of the uses to align better with CTEC. So going from RC2, commercial, to CTEC, which is also commercial.
Thank you, Megan. Board members?
Nope.
Nothing.
Any comments? Okay. Anyone who wants to move?
Public.
Perfect. Yeah, no one?
No, no, I'll make a motion, close vote.
Second.
Sir, okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye. Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye.
Do you want to do it? Go ahead.
No, nothing.
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion that we send this off with a positive recommendation, quantum vote being 50%.
Thank you.
Zoning laws.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay, moving on. Zoning map amendment RC2 to R5 or CTEC, Rosemary Way.
So this is another article as a part of the RC2 phase out. I have not had a chance to speak with these property owners. Hold the map up. So the reason why it's RC2 to R5 or CTEC is because it borders both districts. The lot sizes are smaller, this front one here is used residentially, this here is a garage. So staff's recommendation would lean towards R5, but I'm not sure if anyone in the public or you all may want to have a discussion about that.
Mr. Chair, if I may chime in, on the lot to the west with the garage on it?
Yeah.
We had proposed that these be rezoned several years ago, several. And he had asked for more time to proceed with some type of permitting. And it's been a long time and he hasn't proceeded. And I think it's time for these to get phased out of RC2. We're on the, the home stretch of phasing it all out.
But that's all commercial down there at the end. I mean, you got the shop and then you got Macho Benioff's building down there. And in the front, I'm trying to think of exactly what's there. Is it, isn't there some other little mixed-use thing or is that residential?
I think that's the original house.
Something older, I know. I drive right by it all the time and don't think about it. Oh.
Trying to pull that up.
I mean, how non-conforming is it with CTEC? In the sense of what's there on the ground now, Leslie, is my thinking. Taking it out of mixed-use completely? I just feel like that area is kind of, you know, mixed-use more. So I don't know. Harder to put it back than it is to take it out.
I'm having trouble pulling it up.
You know, sorry. Howard here has got the zoom-in drone picture, everything right here, following, perfect. I like sitting next to you, Howard, this is pretty good. I couldn't do that, see? Well, I don't need to know how to do this. This is amazing, like that's...
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah. A little bit. I'm just trying to just, you know.
So the lot with the garage on it is just over 5,000 square feet. So it would become non-conforming if it went to CTEC. And one, which I think is entirely residential, but it has some property protections that keeps us from pulling up information on it, is also around 5,000 square feet. So those would be significantly non-conforming to size and maybe have setback issues as well.
What about CN, Leslie?
We don't have any CN around there, so those would just be totally isolated.
This is where we come down to the home stretch of these little places that don't fit into the tale of districts that we have made up in the last 15 years. So I'm just struggling with it being kind of mixed-use now and then putting it in R5 is kind of, you know.
Because she stated, he hasn't said anything, he doesn't seem bothered by the change.
No, but I'm talking about from a perspective of what's going to happen in the future there. Are they going to be coming back for something? I don't know, I'm just asking.
We could.
Even, even based upon what you do today, does it prevent them coming back in the future?
Arco Sparrow has his ideas.
I was about to go after Barry this time.
Can I just ask a question before we get our...
Yeah, please.
So did the homeowner or property owner there have any sense of what they wanted to do or...
So...
He's on the other side.
I sent letters to both, one reached out and I, we haven't had a chance to connect.
So in the end analysis, this was wanting to, do you think it's worth waiting and carrying this over into a different...
Yeah.
Before we close the warrant and that will give an opportunity for them to...
From there.
Yeah, all right, good, that at least gives you direction, so think about, think about a good date.
Okay.
I mean, I hate to say it, a lot of people don't actually know what the uses are ground, you know what I mean? And...
Until it's gone.
Until it's gone or, you know, so. I mean, I'm just saying, I think we should wait for, if we can, to continue to another meeting, that would be better.
All right, but we're going to go to Arco Sparrow, who is online. Good evening, Art.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no, you know, input either way on this article. I just wanted to offer, having done a good amount of work back there, that there is an entire, I think the lot you're referring to, number seven, in front of the shop, that's an entirely residential existing house, just for information purposes. I don't have the exact lot area, I think it's around 9,000 square feet. So just some information for, I think, what you were looking for.
Yeah, this is a Marara House, right?
No, that's Mrs. Fleming back there.
Yeah, yep. Okay, that's what I thought, okay. So thank you, I guess we can just reach out to him, we'll leave this open.
Do you want to leave it to February 6th? That way it gives a little extra, an extra week.
So I'll make a motion, we continue February 6th on this one.
Second, please. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay. Perfect, so now we are moving on to zoning map amendment RC2 to R5 or CTEC. And this is Appleton Road.
Yep, so this, this is the last series of properties on Appleton Road to move over from RC2. Let me zoom out on the map. And the reason why it was initially advertised to R5 or CTEC, I hadn't had a chance to speak with all three, three property owners when we had to submit this for consideration. So I've since had a chance to speak with all three and the consensus is to move to R5. So that would be staff's recommendation as well. It's taking the mixed-use to R5, but it, it does blend in better with the neighborhood and just based on past conversations from last year's hearing, at least at that time, that, that was the will of the neighborhood at that time as well to have residential.
Thank you for sharing those letters in the pack, so thank you, that's great. Board members, comments? Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just didn't know if you guys had any comments.
No, not this one.
Okay, anyone from the public, not seeing any hands?
No, motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay, the merits, anyone?
So I'll make a motion at this point that we convert to R. I'm sorry, I'm looking at you a little bit because I, I walked away a little unclear as whether you still needed to work with the property owners.
Nope, nope, they're, they're good. So the suggested motion is to move these properties to R5 and that would require a two-thirds vote.
Great, and so that'll be my motion, move to R5, quantum vote will be two-thirds.
Okay, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay, hold on. Okay, moving on to zoning map amendment RC2 to CMI or CTEC, and this is 43 Nobody Farm, Nobody Farm Road. Dan Malloy, is he on or no?
He is not, I don't believe, but I did have a chance to connect with him via email. And the wish of the property owner is to move to CTEC. So, you know, as staff, I didn't have a recommendation one way or the other. They're both commercial zones, this is currently a mixed-use zone. So I think, you know, honoring that request to CTEC is entirely appropriate and we would support that.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members?
No.
No, this is... Anyone?
Seeing a public comment, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye.
Make a motion, we send this to town meeting with a positive recommendation, quantum vote is 50%.
Thank you, Barry.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye, okay. I need to recuse this one, so...
Sure.
Nat, do you want to?
Oh, sure. Why do you call me when this happens?
Oh, you're the last one. You've now become acting chair.
I'll go to Barry because you're the last one.
Barry, a turn.
Hey, I'll do it.
Go ahead, Barry.
All right. So next force is zoning map change from RC to CN on 103 Washington Street.
No, this is one.
I'm sorry, did I...
Surfside.
No, no, it's 103 Washington.
And we are?
This is what we're on, sorry, guys, you're, you're going faster than I can...
I thought we already did that.
Pull this up on a computer.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, this is our...
This is the sale property.
I thought we already just said yes to that.
No, we haven't.
Yeah.
So you've given your recommendation.
Yep, so the recommendation is to move to CN. This has been held off for some time so that the property owner could complete sub-permitting. They've completed that permitting, so we can move forward with the zoning change. So RC to CN, that requires a quantum vote of 50%.
Any comments from the board?
No.
Seeing none, comments from the audience? Seeing none at this point, no, would suggest that we...
Motion to close.
There you go, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. On that motion, Mr. Lowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kitchner?
Aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative as well, too. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to give this a positive recommendation and the quantum vote is 50%.
And that's great, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kitchner?
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative, thank you. I'm glad it didn't go too far.
How did I get that mixed up? Well, I didn't give it to you. I swear we didn't, all right?
We'd still be working through it.
Jesus.
Okay, moving on. Zoning map amendment RC2 to R10 or CN, Surfside Road, Megan, please.
Sure, so this is a requested rezone of RC2 as part of the phase-out. Suggested districts would be R10 if you wanted to go residential, CN, commercial. I did reach out to these property owners, I did not receive any, any communication back at the staff level. Leslie and I had a chance to chat about this. The properties are currently being used residentially and for that reason, we would suggest that this be rezoned to R10.
Through you, sir?
Yes, please.
To staff? So do you think it's worth moving this ahead tonight or do you think it's worth leaving until the 6th? It's just, that's all I need to hear, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any members in the public?
Motion to close the public hearing, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye.
Make a motion at this point, we do a positive recommendation to change this to R10 district. Quantum vote will be two-thirds.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye, okay, perfect. Okay, moving on to existing, I'm sorry, zoning map amendment R40 to CN, 23 Airport Road. And this is an existing car rental.
Yes, so this, this whole property, this highlighted parcel here and the one in the front is the Windmill Auto Rental. It's used commercially, there's permits in place for, for this, both lots to continue to operate in a commercial capacity. So for that reason, we are recommending a change from R40 to CN. And it's also abutted by CN on three sides.
Okay. The merits, come on, Mr. Chairman. Any members in the public?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you, sir.
Sergeant, Mr. Chair, is your mic on?
Oh, sorry.
Your mic?
Sorry.
Thanks.
Okay, so Barry, any motion to close the public?
Yes, affirmative.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye.
Motion to give this a positive recommendation, quantum vote will be 50%.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye, thank you. On to zoning map amendment ROH to CDT, North Water Street. And these are three properties that kind of were operating as a bed and breakfast. So we're going to clean up the paperwork on that. Megan, do you want to?
I'll talk about this one. So it's three properties, seven, nine, and 11 North Water. Two of the properties are used as a guest house currently. One of the properties, I think, has some interest in perhaps switching to that. We've talked about rezoning these three properties before and received neighborhood opposition, so they stayed in ROH. We have not heard from any neighbors this time around, so I would recommend that you proceed with the change from ROH to CDT.
Thank you, Ms. Snell. Commissioners, any comments?
No, sir.
Anyone in the public, not seeing any?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
The chair is an aye.
Motion to give this a positive recommendation with quantum vote being 50%.
Thank you, sir, and Nat?
Aye.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. This is a zoning bylaw amendment, a technical amendment to Morland's Management District. And I, do we go to Megan first or...
So you all may recall that last year at town meeting, the planning board supported and so did the voters, changing the special permit granting authority for special permits within the Morland's Management District to the zoning board of appeals. And they've reviewed several applications over the year. There were a few places in the bylaw where the wording zoning board of appeals was not changed from planning board. So this is a purely technical cleanup to make sure zoning board of appeals carries throughout the zoning bylaw.
Thank you for that explanation.
Like housekeeping from what we did before.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Commissioners, any comments?
No, sir.
Anyone in the public? No?
Oh, God.
Thank you, Barry.
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye. Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye.
Motion to send this up, positive recommendation, quantum vote being two-thirds.
Thank you, sir.
Um, second.
Thank you. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay. Moving on to zoning bylaw amendment, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments.
All right, this was inserted in the bylaw. It had a, an expiration date of, I believe, December 31st, 2018. During the temporary moratorium period, we adopted regulations for recreational marijuana. We've adopted regulations for medical marijuana. Those are in the bylaw. This no longer needs to be there. So this is a simple deletion and purely housekeeping.
Thank you for that explanation.
Perfect.
Commissioners, anything? Anyone in the public? Not seeing any?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Barry.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay, on the merits.
Motion to give this a positive recommendation, quantum of votes being two-thirds.
Again, thank you.
Uh, second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay, moving on to zoning bylaw amendment, Cottage Community.
Oh, definitions.
Oh, sorry, I jumped one.
That's okay.
I wrote in the wrong area. Zoning bylaw amendment definitions, attainable housing.
So this article proposes to insert language for a definition of attainable housing. This is going to be important with the new allowance for year-round deed restriction. It also mirrors the Affordable Housing Trust's.
Sorry.
That's okay. It also mirrors the Affordable Housing Trust's definition for attainable housing.
Well, thank you for the definition and.
Excellent.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments?
No.
Okay, anyone in the public? Not seeing any?
Motion to reclose the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay, chair is an aye.
And I'll make a motion that we send this off, positive recommendation, quantum vote being two-thirds.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay. Now moving on to zoning bylaw amendment, Cottage Community. Ms. Megan Turell.
So how, how, Mr. Chair, do you want to attack this? Do you want to go through piece by piece? Do you want a broad level overview? What, what's the best way to proceed?
I think start broad level, and then if we need to get into the nuts and bolts of it, we can break it down.
So the intent of this article is to allow a new development type via special permit for cottage community. Think small-scale house, single-family. Montomoy Village is an aesthetic that most frequently comes to mind when trying to describe the visual impacts of this. The purpose is to create these housing units for year-round community members that make at or below 240% area median income. It's as drafted, proposed to be allowed in these residential zoning districts, along with BN, CN, and CTAC. The lot cannot be subject to any other restrictions. The lot must be at least the minimum lot size for the underlying district, so no pre-existing non-conforming lots can utilize this provision. The deed restrictions will be enforced by the Affordable Housing Trust through a regulatory agreement. They'll manage selecting that, that monitoring agent. The proposed density calculations are set forth here. The newly constructed dwelling units cannot exceed 24 feet in height, and these dwelling units cannot exceed three bedrooms. So there would be a metric for a studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. It couldn't have anything beyond that because of the intended smaller scale. Homeownership only, no, no rentals. The ground cover of the underlying district must be adhered to. Let's see, there are parking requirements prescribed that more align with the stricter requirements of apartments than the less strict requirements of single-family dwelling units. Site plan review is going to be required as a part of this, encouraging single access points, clustering of the development with, with larger open space. So that is it in a nutshell. So I don't know. The HGC did take a look at this at their meeting on Thursday. They were overall very supportive of this concept. The one thing they requested that the planning board consider is perhaps amending this condition here, that instead of just prescribing the 24-foot height allowance for any newly constructed dwellings having a variation in, in the, in the height. So 24 maybe is a good cap, but you know, whether it be 18, or 20, or 22, or varying, massing, but just saying, having that detail in a, in a special permit decision. So by the time it, it gets to the HGC, that expectation is already set. Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
We like that. No, during our conversation, we had one story, and then trying to do a story, nothing really getting tall.
Yep.
They're trying to, trying to keep a street state that would work and not be overpowered too massive.
Yep.
And then, so some of this is, we're trying to get a little bit upfront, surprisingly it's in front of the state. So kind of restrict this and make it more restrictive. Bad lines.
Yes.
That is what is going to come out right by the state.
Yes, that's correct. And included in the packet, I have to apologize, I'm going to have to redo this graphic here based on the tertiary dwelling moratorium, but the point of this was to demonstrate what, what could happen on an exactly conforming lot. So this does not take into consideration things, you know, if there's conservation commission approval needed, or septic requirements, or bedroom limitations, or ground cover. It's just simply, you know, what the unit count is as proposed and what that could translate into without any other factors.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, your, your mic.
John, you want to jump right in, please?
Uh, sure. Well, first of all, I, I wholeheartedly support the concept. I do have a question, though, and it's a question of, you know, someone who's new to the, to the board. But if, if this goes to town meeting the way it's worded, is there any risk that it could be amended to include some market rate units as part of this? You know, if a developer was to get hold of this, especially in Lug 1, 2, and 3, where the numbers are fairly big, that would be my only concern, that we, we don't walk out of town meeting with a great concept, but market rate units have crept into it somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, John, I think that could happen, but I think the same point, I think we need prepared what the value of this could bring by having it, you know, for housing. So, but I, I think that that is the key. No, it's on, the key to this, so. But I, I do think that we should just be prepared for that, so.
Yeah, well, that's, that's really it. That's my question. It could, then.
Yep. I, I wouldn't say that it could. I, I would say the moderator has to make the determination that it's within the scope, so.
Okay. I'm just saying someone could make a recommendation.
Oh, yeah, someone could certainly make that motion, but whether that's accepted or considered within the scope, that's beyond what we're able to speculate.
Yeah, correct, I agree. Okay. Do anyone, Howard, please?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask you into B, that there shall not be subject to any covenant restrictions and conferences. Can you explain that clause?
Again, do you want to?
Yep, so that, that would mean it wouldn't be subject to other deed restrictions. So you couldn't do this on a covenant lot, or a lot within a subdivision that, you know, provides you can't have flexibility for multiple dwelling units. Those are just two, two examples.
That this shouldn't contradict a pre-existing condition?
Yeah.
Because that's not what this says exactly. This says there shall be none, and you might want to say except for the pre-existing.
I guess I'm a little unclear.
The, the lot is already have, may already have a deed restriction. But you're saying it should not have any, be subject to any deed restriction.
I, I hear what you're saying. So you mean, it can't be subject to any existing deed restrictions that would prohibit this from happening. So we can adjust that language if, if you want to make a positive motion at some point.
Oops, sorry. Okay. Just, I'm going to throw this out because it came up last meeting. No shop. No shop, you cannot build anything else in those lots, except the shed, maybe. And can't have a pool that way since it started. With Howard's point, plug this into that, that place can't have anything, no matter what rule, what laws are passed, what, whatever. They still, they can't do anything there. I'm trying to come up with a way to explain. Some of these old subdivisions have, like Ms. Mast, you can't have a tertiary there. It's R10 Limited. How does R10 Limited fit into this? Because I don't see that on here, so that means that it's not part of it. I'm just trying to.
It would not extend to R10 Limited.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I'm just trying to come up with some examples instead of just trying to figure out what everyone's thinking. Because the word covenant, when you use that word covenant in B, do you mean covenant lot? Are you just using it as a legal term?
No, a legal term.
That's what I thought.
Not a covenant law.
And that's another little blip. The word covenant is like, you know, scolops now. Everybody knows what a covenant lot is, finally, after all these years. And now we're saying it, completely different definition than what, you know, we think it is now, as a legal term.
So occasionally, the planning board will hold a covenant restricting a subdivision.
Right, right.
To perhaps no further subdivision, or only X number of lots per, excuse me, X number of dwellings per lot.
And then you have.
So if it's enforceable by the town through the planning board, then this would apply. But it, this may or not apply to private deed restrictions, because those are enforced separately, not something that would be involved with.
My head just thought of a couple of other places, Blackfish. There's only six lots can have a second dwelling, I think it was six.
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that. And that wasn't that long ago. And then you had that one out there, and you go point, but we didn't even know that there was no second dwellings, which was kind of crazy at the time, in the 80s. But I, I just think that, I'm getting nervous about this, going to town meeting without a wicked, simple explanation. Because when we do the tertiary moratorium, that will explain. If, like, let's say we didn't have the cottage article at all, and we just were talking about the ADU. Then it's easy to understand what we're doing, because we have to let this process continue. The state, we're 50 years ahead of the state, or the rest of the 251 towns. Like, we're, we're already doing all this stuff, and here they are, trying to stick in a second dwelling somewhere, when no one, we don't even think about that anymore. That's what's caused this problem. So we're trying to fix that, and at the same time, we got the cottage community article. It's kind of hard to get that in your head as to what is going on. You know, one day we're saying we're not going to have a tertiary, but that's because the ADU is allowed by right, which is replacing the tertiary at the moment until we figure out the legislation. And then this comes in, it's, it's not clear, it's certainly not going to be clear to the average voter, I can tell you that, because this is hard to follow. So I'm just saying that it's just, you know, you've got to have a way to explain it wicked easy.
Well, one thing in advance of town meeting, again, if this is a concept that the planning board supports, the communications office is working on some of the more complicated article, articles, and putting together some videos to get out on social media and to have on the town website, and to just have explanations available for people to listen to ahead of time and ask questions ahead of time. So this is something that we could, you know, work on with them.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Howard?
Back to B. I think what you might want to do is, at the end of it, add which may preclude such special permit. Meaning, if it's less restrictive, and then it's okay, but it may be that there is a restriction on there. So it's not going to preclude it. Okay?
Okay. All right. Any other commissioners? I see we got Art Disparo. He has hand up. He's not here.
Meredith Lepre had her hand up first.
Oh, it said, uh, Art's permitted to talk. That's why I thought you had him first.
My bad.
No, it's all right. All right. Good evening, Meredith.
Hi, I'm happy to wait for Art to go first.
Okay, it's up to you all. I don't. Ladies first is my fault.
All right, so Ma, I just had a couple of concerns. One, I think that this is not the type of development that the community wants to see right now. I think Chair Iverson has said that a few times in meetings. And I think, hold on. Nope. And also, I have some significant concerns about increasing density and allowing people to put this many houses on these lots, when we are on sort of the cusp of having a real water issue. I mean, it was said at the CPC meeting in August 29th, that there was the water, there was a change in water pressure for people that had town, have town water this summer because they had to take 1215 off. I think well 16 is right nearby. So that is super concerning to me, that 1215 is, I think, 400, I believe it was said at the Board of Health meeting, maybe 400 feet from the Tom's Way plume. And so that is really not very far. And if we're going to be adding even more really significant dense development, when we have a PFOS problem that is, is not insignificant, you know, the, the wells by the police station that were non-detect, they weren't zero. So every single one of those wells had a level of PFOS. Nobody, nothing was zero. And I think we really need to take that into consideration when we are thinking about what kind of development. And I know that we need housing, but at what cost? Like, do we, do we want people to have a little bit of PFOS? Like, just not enough to give you cancer? I mean, I'm not, I don't think there's a line. I think that Graham Peaslee said, no, there's no good PFOS. And so if we already know it's in our aquifer, we really, I think that this maybe is a, an article that could wait in a little bit longer and, and come back when we figured out how to handle our water. My second one is just that I think this is also very dense development, and I think that we need to think about, we don't want to just give people houses. We don't want people to just buy a house. We want them to be able to create a home. And not everyone is gonna, I would say, I would bet most people want to live when they're on top of each other in this very dense, dense development. And if we want people to be buying these homes that are going to have families and need some space, that this is not going to allow for that. I just think this is not the right time. We really need to think about what our, what our tiny island can handle. And if we don't have clean water, nobody's going to live here. So I think that that's really something I would love for the planning board to think about before giving this. I think it needs, just to be, to be taken out and sit until we figure out how to have clean water. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Art?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, a few comments and concerns with this article, which I believe you're, you're aware of. I brought it to you, I came to you when you were first looking at the initial draft of this. And really, it's just a, a concern of, that it's likely too dense. And when I say that, it's, I think, going to lead, have unintended consequences of, you know, spurring over development. With the way that this could be done, you're looking at, you know, some cases, triple and quadrupling, you know, what could otherwise be done on a lot. There are plenty of lots that are not just at the minimum size. Some are just shy of being split into two, others lack frontage. But, you know, when, you know, when you look at this, this could result in, you know, many, many more dwelling units per, per a lot than you would otherwise have. And I think that from a planning perspective, looking at that islandwide, and you've been doing all of this work, you know, I think some of it through, through Mike, Mr. Burns, and your master planning study in terms of overall carrying capacity of roadways, build-out analysis, that this is, is, could result in so much of a change that it's going to have an overburdening of the services in general. You know, we think about traffic, that you can't get down Old South Road. Now, pri, you know, peak times, nobody at Farm Road. If we don't take that into account, and we're just going to allow such a drastic increase in density, you know, what about all those other factors? Boat reservations, can't get your car inspected, can't get a dense deployment, right? And, you know, the, these are all things that I think, when you increase density through such a zoning change, should be factored in from a planning perspective. I'm not sure if you all saw, I had sent a letter yesterday, and I, I sent it to the chair, and Leslie and Megan, and I apologize, I didn't have it to the board for, for this meeting tonight. I mistakenly had my schedule for this being heard on the 30th. But I just took a couple of lots in the Lug 1 district and looked at them. And they, that exist, they're vacant lots, they're part of a warrant article that's a citizen proposes to put them in the Sua district. There seems to be some support for moving properties into the Sua district if they're willing to do this kind of affordable housing, whether that passes or not. But, you know, on that assumption, those two lots right now could have six dwelling units, and, you know, the scenario that I laid out, you could have 36. I mean, that's the kind of a change that, that you have. And those would be, you know, two-bedroom cottages of the, of the type that, you know, staff referred to, you know, which I appreciate the, the Montomoy Village concept, but I think you have to factor in. And, and I didn't lay out all of the parking and everything else, you know, but I could, and it would work. And so I just think that it's important to factor that in for how drastic it could be. I just then quickly looked at a, a lot on, on Lover's Lane, you know, that has a house on it, and it's oversized. And, you know, you could take that down. And I think I had come up with, you know, 15 houses then could go on that, the three that would be there. Mr. Mori's subdivision proposal, his own analysis is 15 to, to 40 houses on that property as a result of this change, you know, and with sewer. So I, I, my recommendation would be to table this article at this point for, for further refinement. And then if, that you're not going to do that, which I understand might be the position of the board, that you continue it from tonight. And I think that it would be a good idea if staff were able to, say, pick a, two properties from each district and give, and do. from each district and give, and do kind of like I did on that other one and give the board a sense of what this, what this could mean, especially on a lot that's not just the minimum size. I'd also remind you that, you know, these wouldn't be included in our shy list. So while they do fit that, you know, 240% category, that means that every one of the cottages can get sold over a million dollars. And with that, the reason I bring that up is that it's going to super speculative development where, you know, you're going to be looking for lots that you could take down a house and, and then come in and, and do this and maximize that out. And that could have the unintended consequences that I mentioned. So I would just ask that, I, I fully appreciate the intent, the need for the housing, but consideration for, for what this ultimately could result in. And thanks again for your, for your time and work on this.
No, thank you, Art. Okay, we're going to move to Ms. Megan Perry. Good evening, Maggie.
Can, can you guys hear me okay?
Of course.
Awesome, thank you so much. I, I know there's a limit, so I would like to just echo what Mary and Art just said. I'm in full agreement with them. I also wanted to add that I, I think until we have answers, like some of the questions that the Water Commission and the Water Director has regarding our availability to have clean water and have water pressure to put out fires, that this article is a little bit premature. We don't know if we can sustain these things. We don't know if this is appropriate. And I think, like the Water Director said, high-density developments are adding a stress and pulling PFAS plumes closer to municipal wells and increasing a greater chance of contamination in our drinking water. There is no safe level of PFAS. And so if we can try to prevent contaminating the deeper wells, that would be great. So I just wanted to voice those concerns. And if the board has any questions regarding that, happy to try to answer any. But again, I would like to echo what Art and Mary have already said. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move to Darla Stuckey. Good evening, Darla.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to echo what everyone else has said and just register my disapproval of this. And I would hope that you would table it and bring it up again. I think it's just in general, too much development, too dense development. So for what it's worth, thank you.
No, thank you very much for your opinion. Thank you. I'm going to move to Ms. Erica Mooney. Welcome, Erica.
Hi, sorry, just unmuted. I would second Art's recommendation about staff putting forward a lot or two in each district so that everybody, including the board, could have a better idea of what the potential build out could actually be. And I know at the last time that this was discussed, somebody also suggested maybe trying it out in one zone as a, as a kind of pilot. So if, you know, if this article is, is to go forward, I would recommend one or both of those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, board members, thoughts, comments? From back in the. Anyone else on? Hello, Patrick. How are you? Patrick Tave at the mic.
Thank you. Patrick Tave, 21 Okawawa Avenue. I just kind of like to reiterate what Arthur had said and really ask you not to support this. I just don't think it's fair. Can you tell me how many zones that you could apply for this in, the CDT? Megan? LG1, LG2, LG?
No, we're just going to bring it up in a second.
Right.
Could miss great. So ROH, R5, R10, R20, R40, VR, Lug 1, 2, and 3, BN, CN, CTAC, and then the, the Scotset Reciprocles.
So, so more than 14 zones. That affects a lot of people in Nantucket. And most people that have bought their property bought it because that's where they want to live and they like the density where they are. They like close neighbors or they don't like close neighbors. I just don't think it's fair to any property owner to be able to grant this special permit and say, hey, guess what? You're going to have six houses or 12 houses next door tomorrow. I, I, I just think we need to come up with another way to find affordable housing. This, this doesn't help us with the shy list, if I'm correct? Even though it designate the homes, you know, to, what does it say? Attainable housing in perpetuity. And, and someone earning 240% of the area median income, if what I'm reading online right now is correct, area median income's 153,000 plus. So it's $367,000. I mean, I don't know if we really need to subsidize someone that's earning $367,000 as a family when most of the people who live on Nantucket weren't subsidized to buy the housing that they have. It's also a density issue. I don't know if there's any statistics that the town has or the planning board has, but every time we build more affordable housing, dense housing, are we increasing the population of Nantucket or are we housing the people of Nantucket? I, I don't know that something like this is really going to house people that live here already. We just need to find a better way to create affordable housing that one, everyone on the island can live with. And, well, I'd just like you to not support this article.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. How are you, Emily? Welcome.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. Emily Malden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I also made some initial comments, I think, the first time that the planning board was discussing this. And I very much appreciate having that, this concept brought forward and considering different ways to support and incentivize attainable housing on the island. We also are concerned, however, that this is really just trying to do much too much at once and in better understanding what the implications of this would be islandwide to our infrastructure and to density. I've had a number of people contact me just asking me about this article and expressing some concerns. And I think to go to some of the previous speakers, sort of talking about what the density could be, I think that ultimately is going to be one of the biggest questions at town meeting is how much will this increase density in different parts of the island? And how will that impact our infrastructure? I think that the idea of starting something like this with one district or one part of the island would make more sense, but I don't think we should proceed with it at a pace faster than we can calculate and understand what the larger implications of it would be. I would be interested to know if the other town departments have weighed in on this, specifically like sewer and water. And I know that the, we're obviously in the midst of the master plan update right now. And it seems as though it might make more sense to address this article and where this concept could be applied after moving through that process, when there's kind of a better sense that town is actually going from a planning perspective as a whole. So I would, I guess, just echo some of the concerns about not moving forward with this as it's proposed at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. We're going to go online to Charity Benz. Welcome, Charity. They're muted. Charity is still muted.
Okay, sorry about that. Very much. I have some questions and a couple of comments. Is there a limit to the number of these developments, because that's what they are, in each zone? Or could, is it possible that, for example, if you live in, in an area with 14 three-acre homes, that 12 or 13 of them could become this city-like environment?
I couldn't hear. Did you understand anyone?
The question, let me say it again. Is there a limit to the number of these developments, which is what they are, that can go into each type of zone? Or is it every parcel in every one of these zones that's vulnerable to this development?
Well, it's, every application would be a special permit, but right now, I believe that everything, yes, would be available.
It would have to be a conforming lot size. It would have to be an eligible zoning district. And as it's currently drafted, there is no, you know, cap or, or kind of number, if you will, per, per zoning district or allocation that's set up to, to have this administered at that way.
So in other words, if the planning board or whoever is assigned to issue the special permit decided to make Nantucket into Hilton Head Island, let's say, or there's no protection, there's no zoning protection, which the other gentleman mentioned, upon which residents can rely? Is that correct?
Well, the other thing you have to weigh in on or, or bring to the table is the ADU that is coming by right from the state. So the other part of this is we would be far more restrictive than this. We would have a full review and nothing would be just, you know, by, by right. You would have to come before the planning board with plans and, and have review of everything that would go in. And if it was in a lot that didn't have sewer, you, you were being restricted by septic. So there's a lot of variables. We're, you know, when Megan started this, we really didn't know the ADU was coming. We heard rumors of it and here it is. So the, my perspective right now is, you know, I, I do think there is, we, we should be ahead of this because you're going to have 20 come in and there's no special permit. So I'm not trying to force anything, I'm just trying to say that, you know, we're in a, I don't want to say race to the finish line, but the, you know, we, we're trying to get ahead of this. That's the one thing, you know, why, when I was working on this, I thought it was something that was great that we were working on, that do I think there's still a little tweaking touches that we can do? Absolutely. But I, I think that the, the state article coming forward by right is very concerning to me. And I think that other people will have the same. So that is, you know, it's like a 40B. All of a sudden, bam, there it is and, and there's nothing to do. So that's, were my perspective. That's my seat, that's my thought, so.
Well, let me just, let me just suggest that this is, this has been put forward without any kind of impact analysis at all. And I think the suggestions that this be mapped out to the fullest extent of what is possible on the island would help the voters make a decision. The other question I have is Megan said that there were no rentals. Does that mean there are no short-term rentals?
That's correct. So these are to be owner, as currently drafted, these are to be owner occupied by year-round residents only.
And that should be specified clearly that no short-term rentals are permitted within the article. And I think you would be able to expect an amendment to that effect. And finally, I just want to say that, on the island of Jersey in the English Channel, they are now doing bloodletting for people who have been impacted and their blood levels are so high that that is the alternative for them. So we certainly do not want to get ourselves into that sort of a situation. Thank you very much.
I missed that. I completely missed that thought.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to repeat it.
What did you say?
Okay, what I said was on the island of Jersey in the English Channel, because the levels of PFAs in human blood is so high, the country is getting involved in appropriating money for bloodletting for people who are victimized by PFAs. Thank you.
PFAS, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, Eric, I see your hand, but we're going to go to Ms. Catherine Ward, who has not spoken at this time. Hi, Catherine, you're muted.
It's hard when you're on this side of the microphone. I've been listening to this and I know very little about the PFAS, but started reading about it today and it's, it's scary how that can move and what it's going to take to make us safe. So it sounds to me like we need a lot of research yet on the impact of all of this housing. So that's one thing. And the second thing is a question that a former speaker brought up about, will this housing be available just to people who are already on Nantucket? Or are we building it so they'll come? And that scares me. I think that what would be helpful at the town meeting would be that map that would populate these areas that you're talking about, little red dots, green dots, I don't care what color dots. But to put it up there to let us see what this is going to do to the housing on the island and where it's going to be at a maximum capacity. Because we all know that things will go, you know, for permits and there might be a full permit granted for what a builder wants or there might not be. But we need to see what the total impact of the island could be. So thank you for letting me make these comments.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we are going to move back to Ms. Erica Mooney. Erica?
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'm just curious, back to what you had said a little bit a couple of minutes ago, Mr. Topham, when you were correlating the community, the, this article with ADUs. And I thought that the planning board's response to the ADUs was the moratorium on tertiary dwellings. And I'm, and I'm just, I'm confused about the, the correlation between cottage community and ADUs.
Okay, Megan, go ahead.
So that's part of it, Erica. And we have those public hearings scheduled, I believe, for February the 6th, all of the, the moratorium and the ADU-related articles that is a directive by the state. What Joe is talking about is the provision in the state regulation that requires towns to require the allowance of multiple ADUs by special permit. So the language is very vague. There is not parameters that are put into place. And we can expect to get into more detail about that specifically at our meeting on the 6th. But the moratorium was put into place to, to deal with the single ADUs allowed by right. So in lots that are currently allowed, for example, a primary, secondary, and tertiary effective February 2nd, under the, the state guidelines, they would then also be allowed an ADU. So the size limitations are very similar. It's a standalone structure, 900 square feet. So the thought process was to kind of have the ADU take the place of the tertiary until we could flush out what implications keeping tertiary may, may or may not have. So I hope that helps to clarify.
Erica, you all, is that helpful?
I mean, I guess I just still don't understand how it relates to the cottage colony.
Well, the, the ADU is multi-layered in a lot of facets. So, you know, we're addressing one with a tertiary, but at the same point, the ADU that's coming in is, is less restrictive than cottage community. That's my understanding. And as Megan just said, the language is a little vague. And I think that our language, from my understanding and reading of it, is, is more restrictive and, and under review. So that's what I'm trying to avoid is not have something by right just come into the state.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Nat, do you want to?
No, the, everything we talked about earlier is, is coming true. We, we've got the state coming at us with something that we don't need because we already fixed all this a long time ago with a, with a, by the way, unanimous vote for the tertiary dwelling, Richard Ray championing it. I remember that vividly. We have all this. Now we're working on other things to kind of, the affordability part, the deed restrictions, year-round, buy-down, and all of a sudden this comes. This is a huge monkey wrench thing. So I just would appreciate, this coming from me, that the people that think we're trying to like build Dinsmore cottages all over the island or, you know, Anna Drive. Am I correct on that, the timing? I am, right?
Yes.
We were working on, this was getting sort of patched before this ADU thing showed up.
Right.
So, but on the other hand, it does give a lot of, you know, makes a lot of sense to continue, obviously we're going to continue this, but I'm talking about like flushing out the differences. And then you get into the whole ground cover issue. Like you can build to your ground cover right now, build three houses if you want, without a problem. Like this doesn't add ground cover. Now, that's another conversation, ground cover bonuses and these other things for deed restrictions, but this cottage community article does not add ground cover, doesn't make a lug three lot suddenly 4% instead of three, or a lug one into eight instead of seven, or something like that. But yeah, it does, it could add, and when you say units, you need, we need to like explain that, uh, both of you, sorry. Because wording is important. Like what is a unit? Like I, I know these words get so simplified, but like what does that mean? Does it mean another kitchen? Does it mean a bedroom? Does it mean a house? What is it? Like in the case of, of the list, that has to all be defined and explained so that everyone understands what's happening here. Because this is not planning trying to add more density in the sense of ground cover. It adds density in potentially two families instead of one, or three instead of two, or something like that. It might add a couple of cars. It's going to add something, but it's not adding density as far as ground cover. Somebody can build a second dwelling that has four bedrooms if it's allowed to have and not have a tertiary and still have the same number of bedrooms as a cottage colony property would have. That's the part that's hard to wrap, wrap around and understand. Okay, thank you. Units.
Meredith, I'll go to you in a second, but we're going to go to Emily at the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarifying question because I'm still not as familiar with the new legislation. The, what you were just describing as far as the multiple ADUs coming, is there, whether it's a cottage community concept like this or something else, if a municipality like Nantucket preemptively adopts something like that, will it, would it in any way impact whether that state legislation gets applied here? Or is that, would that be coming in addition or regardless?
Meghan?
It's coming no matter what.
No matter what.
This isn't an opt-in thing. Like most of the stuff has been in the past, right?
And, yep. And I, and I want to be careful because it's, the ADUs aren't on tonight's agenda, but it is very much intertwined, right, into the conversation? But that will be on, on for February 6th. So when you do continue this hearing, I suggest you continue it to the 6th so that we can have parallel conversations about that.
And I think.
Put in the packet that language of ADU so we can, everyone can see both at the same time.
I was just going to say what Joe said, and I would add too, and I don't know if we can do this, I'm like meeting to death, I didn't even, it's like insane, but we may need to have a meeting just about this. That's it. Like this, this is a big deal, like in a sense of confusion. I know, I know, acting chair, I know.
Just sighed like you.
I know you did, the microphone was on too. So I just don't know what the answer is as far as like, you know, what, how do we flush this out as far as the understanding of the public? I'm not talking about anything else. This is hard for us to understand. The state, but I do like to keep saying, the state is fixing everywhere else we didn't need fixing. We should have been exempt. They should have forgot about Nantucket, forget us, we're all set over here, we got our own thing going. And I don't know if there's a way that Julian or Tom can fix this with some kind of bill that exempts Nantucket from this because we already have all these solutions here. I'm just saying, it's true, right?
Blizzard, please.
Can I say two things? And again, as Meghan pointed out, the accessory dwelling unit discussion is for another meeting, so let's not go down that road too far. But this is a question that's come up with this legislation. Is it something that we opt into? And it's not. The, the language is being added to 48, Section 3, which provides zoning exemptions for all municipalities. So it's not just Nantucket, it's not something we can choose to be a part of or not, it applies to all the towns and the Commonwealth. So that was one thing. And then, I lost my train of thought with that one, Nat? It was something you said I wanted to.
Oh, the ground cover part? No.
No, I'll think of it. That was an important point that I wanted to make.
We'll come back to you. Okay. All right. Meredith, you're on mute.
Yes, sorry.
Welcome back.
Thank you. And thank you guys so much for letting me speak earlier. Can you guys just turn off your microphones if you're going to sigh? Because it's kind of rude, especially when we're talking about something as important as the density or PFAS. I mean, I had thyroid.
I wasn't, sorry, just interrupted. I wasn't boning at anyone in the public.
Oh, no, it wasn't you. It wasn't you.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I just think this, you know, I, I had thyroid cancer and it was likely due to the PFAS that I was exposed to in my home. So I, I just think that you, you know, you have to take a long, hard look at this, that that is a serious concern. And any, anyone here, if you have town water or a well, it doesn't matter, it's, it's in our aquifer. So just really need to take that seriously. Thank you.
I mean, Mary, can I just ask you a question? I know to put you on the spot. And it was probably me that sighed. That's okay. I do it all the time, it's not just here. So I just want to ask you a question, and I'm not being argumentative. Would you hear what I said about what can be built right now? Like where's the building moratorium article from somebody? I'm not, I'm just saying, if, if every nail that goes into a piece of wood is the big worst thing that ever happened, where's the moratorium article from someone? I'm just trying to say, there's a lot of buildable infill land on Nantucket, okay? People have lots of building rights here. If this issue, and I'm not saying it's not serious, by the way, is that big, then, then we shouldn't be building anything. And under the thoughts that are coming out from people talking about this, this cottage colony is not changing, it's not going to make people use more water, it's not going to change any of that, it's just a way to have separate living conditions. I mean, there are other ways to increase the number of bedrooms through basements, through all kinds of different things that can be done without anything from the state or any other article beyond the density and the number of dwellings that can be on a lot now. So we're struggling here too, Mary, about this. This state, I mean, if you listen to what the staff just said, the state is telling us what to do, but we don't need to be told what to do. Maybe other communities do, but we don't. And now we have to figure out how to fix it, or at least head it off. And that's what we're trying to do now. So the cottage colony thing was hatched before the ADU state law or state whatever. What are we going to call it? Is it a law? Is it a requirement? What are we calling this? Zoning change? State allowance?
Part of the Affordable Homes Act.
Affordable Homes Act. So it, this isn't something that we're trying to do, Mary, I just want to make that clear, okay? So, and I appreciate your input.
Thank you. I, I just think if like somewhere, like in my neighborhood, if there were six homes versus 40 homes, 40 homes is going to use a lot more water than, than six homes, right? I would think.
Well, all right, but to that, sorry, not to go back and forth, but if there's 40 homes and we say you can only have 25 because by special permit, you know what I mean? By right, if there's 40 and we only say 25 is special permit, that's, that's what I'm trying to say is like, that's what the state could require if you want to use that kind of math. So I understand where you're going at, but I just, we're, we're trying to get ahead of this and I, and we're going way down the rabbit hole of ADU. So I don't mean to cut you off, but I just.
No, that's fine.
We got to stop, we can't, I'm going way too far. So, but we will discuss this at a later date. Okay, thank you. Catherine Ward?
Yes, I just want to follow up on two things that Matt said, that is there any way that the town is talking to the state about how we might not need their rules right now? Is there any effort ongoing on that? And then secondly, is, can't the planning board suggest a moratorium on building until we can get all of this put in place and understand what the rules are and then this issue with the water? Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Ward, we're going to ask Leslie Snell to answer your question.
And actually, I was going to address that after Nat spoke, it was a thing I couldn't remember. I, I am aware that the chair of the select board has reached out to some of our state legislators, legislators to ask if there's any way that Nantucket could be exempted in the future or if it could be delayed, that type of thing. I don't have the email handy, but I know that she's, you know, reached out.
Thank you. Okay. Do, hold on one second.
John Ketchner has his hand raised.
Welcome, John.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to, to respond to, you know, a number of people this evening have made comments about what is this going to do to density? And I would like to strongly suggest that we take up Mr. Gasparo's suggestion of taking some examples in summer roll districts to, on a fact-based, you know, methodology, understand what this could do to a number of homes, therefore number of people, therefore number of cars, whether it, use of water and sewer. Because, you know what, what he's suggesting, we need to understand what the facts are. And I don't think that is a massive undertaking, Mr. Chair. And I would hope that, you know, as, if we continue this and perhaps put it off to a special town meeting, that that piece of work gets done so that we understand what we're talking about when we talk about density. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And to kind of zoom out on that, John, I think the other part of it would just do, you know, staff level, you know, traffic study, what would be that impact in that area where, you know, say if it was on the Matic or whatever that may be, but I think that that would be kind of wise, so.
Yeah, I think that should be part of it, but Mr. Gasparo's was a little more basic than that to understand what we mean by density.
Okay, so I think at this time, I think we've heard enough comment. And so we're going to.
Motion to continue.
Yep. Nat?
Motion to continue. For the 6th, I think? Is that what you said?
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Nat, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
We will talk about this on February 6th. Thank you, Fred, for your input. It was very valuable and insightful, so thank you. All right, moving on to pickleball. So.
Now, inclusionary housing.
Oh, inclusionary housing, sorry, I put the wrong sheet. I used that as my note sheet. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on to, I cut all my papers. Zoning by law amendment, inclusionary housing. Meghan, please.
So I'll give a higher level overview of this and then if we have more detailed questions or want to go through point by point, we can do that. So you may remember this came forward as a citizen-sponsored petition at last annual, special annual. And, you know, there was a lot of both planning board concerns and community concerns surrounding that first impact to, to commercial property and by right subdivision. So we worked with the sponsor to eliminate the commercial components of that initial petition, so there is no longer a commercial aspect to this. It also no longer applies to by right subdivision. There was a, a conflict with some case law that, that prohibits that from being included in this bylaw. So what it does apply to is requiring inclusionary housing to lots that are divided through special permit. So what that means is lots in excess of five lots divided through our by law provisions such as flex development or rear lot subdivision. It also applies to properties that construct multiple units in excess of, of five of more. So that would be by right apartment buildings or within a workforce rental. So when you have that, you'll have to have one unit be attainable, two 40% AMI or, or less for a year-round household. So that is it in a overview. Not sure if anyone has, has specific questions or wants to dive into the details.
Any commissioners, any comments?
Yes, sir.
Thoughts? Okay, let's go to the public. Not seeing any. Okay.
So, do you want a little more time with this or are we good? As far as your, it seems like we're in good shape.
I think, I think we're good.
Okay, all right. No, I just, I'm sorry, I kind of, that said away. So I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay.
And you're an aye.
What's that?
You're an aye as well.
Oh, no, I swell, sorry. I already know it says I'm speaking.
I know, you've got a lot to manage.
Go ahead.
All right, so I'll make a motion at this point that we send this with the positive recommendation on quote, two thirds.
Thank you.
With some language.
Do you want to put a?
Is that possible from last year? No, is that not necessary?
No, this, this version is cleaned up.
I know, it is. That's what I mean. It is cleaned up.
And we can, we can address that.
Because people might not know that it was an article.
Yes, we can address that through a comment.
Okay, that's what I mean.
If we get to that stage, yeah.
Yep, that's what I'm talking about. Thank you, I'll second that.
Okay. John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay. Go ahead, want to say something?
Did you ask for, I think Nat made, I made the motion, Nat seconded.
I thought you made the motion.
I, I did, but did you?
I seconded, but I started talking.
Right, but I think you also made those votes as, just retake the vote.
Okay. Barry, on your motion.
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye.
I'm sorry, I just.
No, it's all right, I, thank you for double checking.
No problem.
I'm new here.
Oh, yeah.
I am in the seat. Okay. All right, now, pickleball?
Pickleball.
Pickleball. Okay. This is zoning by law amendment for pickleball. Leslie Snell, do you want to walk us through this one, please?
All right.
You've done a really good job and.
Oh, thanks.
So, and I, we did have a very good discussion the other day.
Yeah. All right, so, you know, this came up really at the staff level of, you know, neighbors coming in and asking about, you know, what we can do to help mitigate the effects of pickleball courts being installed next door to them. And, and the answer is really, we, we can't do anything, we don't have any prohibitions about that, we don't have any specific requirements about that, it just has to meet the same setbacks that anything else would have to meet. So after a little more research, I mean, this is sort of a national issue of, you know, pickleball and the noise that it creates and, you know, perhaps lighting and other types of noise to neighbors. And so we decided to bring forward this concept to prohibit pickleball in all zoning districts. And the idea was the prohibition may not be the direction that the board wants to go, it may be overly restrictive, but by putting, you know, the most restrictive option in the warrant, it gives the board a lot of flexibility during their discussions and through the public hearings to consider something less restrictive. It gives town meeting the option, you know, if someone wants to propose amendments, to propose something less restrictive. So this was put in to get a conversation started. And, and even if, you know, it's not supported, I think it's an issue that deserves some discussion and, and discussion by the community, not just internal discussion, so.
Do you want to walk through some of the bullet points that we had really quickly or no? Do you want to leave it there?
Let's just leave it there.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments? No? Are we going to go to the public? Ms. Jill Veeth, welcome. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, great. Hi, thanks, thanks for taking my comment. And I just want to kind of better understand in this discussion what we're banning because, you know. you know, pouring slab on grade and you all monitoring, you know, creating setbacks and where it can go. Like, some people do that and it's not necessarily a sport court or it is a total multi-sport court. So if you're focused on the noise of pickleball, it seems to me the noise should be addressed through a noise by law. And that's where I'm kind of confused. I'm not advocating for everyone to have a pickleball court at their home. I'm not. I don't mean that. But regulating noise seems very different to me than what you're talking about. And I don't understand if you're talking about banning the ball, the sound, you know, and what, there are other sports that are coming along. It's not just pickleball. There are other things out there. So that's, that's really kind of what I wanted to hear from you in terms of what you all are thinking about.
Okay. So thank you. Seeing no one else online. One of the discussions we had was that, you know, the HCC is starting to see more and more of these. There was an evening where they spent over thirty-plus minutes discussing their purview and it was coming down to sound. And also the permit or the application before them was, you know, a longer lot and the pickleball court was as far away from the owner's house. So really having an impact on the neighborhood in Matican area. So after that half an hour, not being able to get people to stay within the HCC guidelines, the Chair walked out. And as Ms. Snell has mentioned, there have been people coming in and complaining about the noise. One of the recommendations we had was, and you mentioned last night, and we talked about this the other day, was maybe a glass enclosure or some sort of matting with landscaping. But my idea was that it comes in with the details. Basically that a court would come forward and when the court was before the HCC, that the containment system, sound system deafening or deadening would be as one permit based on the location. One of the other suggestions was to use like Concom restrictions from your area and maybe it's, you know, closer to the main house or it's a hundred-foot buffer zone, you know, really trying to look at every level right now at what and how to stop this. You know, we're not saying we want to ban this. And one of the comments was, well, you can have a pool. And I have a client that has a pool and it's pushed up right to his lot line and the pumps are near his area, but the other part of it is, he said that all he hears all day is Marco Polo. So the part of that is, is like how, you know, when a pool is being used, there's most times it's quiet. A pickleball court, what's in use, it is the pop, pop, pop. You know, we've had discussions about tennis and there's just a slower rhythm and a different paddle and all that stuff. So there's different noises. So we're really trying to get language prepared and ready, but the other part of it, Ms. Veeth, is that if we don't do anything, then there's nothing to do. And I, and I think that that's what we want to do. And I agree with what Ms. Snell did in writing and putting the article forward is let us back it off, you know, somewhat. That is acceptable. We've asked that the HCC weigh in on this for some of the location designs impact, and I think that's going to be really critical to go forward. So I recommend that you go and watch our last meeting on this. We just had a special meeting for this court decision or discussion, and I think that that would be really invaluable. But I do think it comes down to the detail and how that is mitigated. And, you know, eventually, if you say, oh, it's a, it's a lot that's, you know, no one's around it, well, actually someone's going to be building around it unless it's got conservation restrictions. So my thought is, and I said this and it's in the paper, like grab the bull by the horns, let's go, let's, let's try and get something in place that is useful and that would also give guidelines to the HCC when they're making a decision. And I think that that's the most important. I don't want to see a ban. I love platform tennis and tennis, so I do not play pickleball, but I do understand the love of the game. So I don't know if anyone else has any notes to add.
Yep.
Leslie, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that the zoning by law contemplates game courts. They're an accessory use for residential zones. Maybe they're called out for commercial stuff, but game courts are part of zoning. And this would be to separate this particular type of game court, which has a particular impact to neighboring properties from just that general term. And we do have, you know, a section of the zoning by law that talks about prohibited uses. And it talks about the use of, I'm trying to paraphrase here, the use of a premises, which is a nuisance to the community or the neighborhood. So, you know, I think you could make the argument, if you're of that opinion, that this is that and has a proper place in zoning. You know, the, the enforcement of the noise by law through public safety is, is a different type of enforcement. It could be a different step for enforcement. But I don't think just saying it can be enforced by the police necessarily gets at the impacts or potential impacts.
Right. Yeah. All right. You want to go ahead? Because otherwise it's going to go back to the public.
Yeah, just a little bit. And then there's going to be a lot of discussion about this. This isn't just disappearing. At least we're not talking about density and cottage colonies and cars and typical stuff. So this is, this is where I'm coming from. This is like out of nowhere, like with a very humorous, TikTocky kind of thing to it. Okay, it is. This is very TikTocky, and I think that's a good way to explain it. I am never playing pickleball, but I guess it's popular. Okay? It used to be basketball, you know, street hockey, Academy Hill, Joe. I don't think you were there, were you? That was a long time ago.
Good.
And I just know, we have got to get this right if we do anything beyond setbacks and that. We got to help the HDC, and I think that that's the right thing. You've explained that enough, Joe. You're there, I'm not. I just don't want to look ridiculous. Okay? I think we need to be possibly looking at ROH, R1, R5, R10 as not allowed. That's easy to figure that out. You know what I mean? You're not going to have a pickleball court on Union Street, you know? But I still feel that all the things that are allowed that are noisy, there's a lot of new stuff and a lot of old stuff that's noisy, that annoys people. Lighting on job sites now, I see a lot of things that we haven't seen before just because it's capable of happening, right? Never would, you wouldn't be able to have something like that twenty, thirty years ago, wouldn't even know where to buy one of those or rent one, right? But I'm looking at this as something fresh that we can look at, almost like a crystal ball thing, like if we knew how many pools there were going to be in the mid-eighties now, then, you know, what was going to happen forty years later, how many pools there'd be. We probably would have had some kind of, like we did with the sizes, and I talked to you about this already. But this is, this, and if, and if we put something in and all of a sudden, as Matt Veeth said the other night, somebody that invents a quiet pickleball is going to be rich. I mean, that was, that's what I was thinking. Like, is there going to be a quiet pickleball? I don't know. Right? Maybe. And then we've wasted our time, right? We want people to be outside exercising and doing things, right? So I'm looking at this as some sort of simple, you know, some kind of general bylaw, you know? I don't know. I mean, six o'clock, seven o'clock, I don't know. What is the answer to this? I don't know. When you have friends over and you have a big cookout, people are packed on the side of the road, hopefully not hitting some of those rocks people are putting out, and you have people over and you make noise one night. I mean, you might get a call from a neighbor, the police might come over and say, hey, can you guys tone it down a little bit? But pickleball, is that going to be something that's like every night? Every two nights? I mean, what are people gonna, how is this fitting into people's lifestyles? Is my, it's not a club. Is somebody, yeah, at a club, becoming a club, everybody comes over after work to play pickleball? I mean, I don't, I just can't, this is something that is like, you know, we need to be careful how far we take this. I mean, this, and watching the Turo meetings and thinking pickleball the whole time, I'm going, oh my God, what are we doing? You know what I mean? So that's, and I'm not saying that nothing needs to be done. I just don't know how far we should be going beyond the simple stuff.
Okay.
So that's it, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you. I would, please.
Leslie, I have a question for you. I just wondered, so you have this very general warrant that you want to present at town meeting, and you want to attract discussion about it. How do you see this playing out there and what do you believe is the end product that's going to result from a town meeting discussion on this?
Well, I think that a couple of things could happen. The planning board could decide to not adopt the article and to take no action, which could result in discussion at town meeting or not. The planning board could go with the article as drafted, support that to town meeting, which again would, you know, result in the article being called or not. I think the best approach, if the board is interested in doing anything, would be to refine it here. Perhaps come up with, you know, certain districts that it's allowed in or not allowed in, somewhere it's allowed by special permit with some, you know, appropriate findings and conditions. And I believe all that would be within the scope of the article. So if that's a direction that you want to go, it would be good to hear some ideas. I mean, I have some ideas. And then we could present those at a later meeting. But really, for tonight, it was just to open the conversation and see sort of, you know, where the board wants to go with it.
I expected that you would say that because I do think that we have to go to town meeting with a proposal in hand that people can like or dislike or will away at in public.
Agreed. Ms. Director.
I'm not sure where I want to start with this, but I, you know, the thing is, Nat, I love what you said at one point. Welcome, when we were first trying to get our head wrapped around this, welcome to ban Nantucket.
Ban Nantucket.
Yeah, I get that. And I have to say that when people purchase their houses, they also purchase the property around their house. And by right, that is for the enjoyment of the homeowner to be able to do things as opposed to everyone trying to tell you what you're doing. So I think at times we've got to be very careful about how we infringe upon people's rights under which, under which to have reasonable enjoyment of their possessions. Everything that I see with this really kind of centers in on the whole noise factor. There may be some additional triggers that will happen, but noise seems to be the central thing. It also begins to make me wonder as well, too, was yesterday's basketball court, today's pickle court, which will be in five years, the next new thing, and whether it makes noise or not, we don't know. But here we are faced with this thing. I would agree that maybe there are certain zoning districts it just shouldn't be in, SOH, ROH, you know, where the density is high. And the other thing, too, is think about it, if you put it into high-density environments, you've got all these houses around you and houses are notorious about echoing noise back. So that's actually defeating the purpose of what you can do. Noise, though, can be addressed and attenuated, and there are a number of different circumstances under which you can do that. We're bombarded and surrounded by noise every day. Ambient noise is considered forty dozens. If you're on the street corner or something, you may be up at fifty-five and then it goes from there. I get it. It's, it's the repetitiveness of it. It is the sharp tone of it as well, too. But that doesn't mean there aren't ways to attenuate it. It could be, I mean, there are noise blankers out there, there are the ability to put walls up. I see this possibly becoming a special permit type thing where we can address this on a case-by-case basis because I think there's the key to it. What, what, when you're looking at a piece of property, what is it? What are the characteristics of it? That's the first thing. If the piece of property is surrounded densely by trees or is a budding land bank property or something, then probably not a problem. But if it's next to a series of dwellings or something, then, okay, we have to look, are there ways to deal with mitigating circumstances in mind? And what are those mitigations that we would begin to put in place? I mean, one thing I heard was, oh, yeah, people are notorious for putting it as far away from their property as possible. Well, if it's a special permit, maybe that's one thing we don't allow. You can't make it someone else's noise problem. The other thing, too, is I think special permit serves this best because one of the things I've always said and continue to say to this day, I like special permits because if it's not right, you have the ability to reopen the special permit and either make an opportunity to get it right or bring it to a grinding halt. But there's an ability, I think, to better control the situation and deal with this on a true case-by-case basis. I think if you try to put this into the category of one size fits all, it will either be too restrictive or an abysmal thing. So this is where I'd probably say, given my druthers, although, and our staff is going to look at you with daggers, like, oh, yeah, he has another thing, but yeah, planning board to deal with, with a special permit, another special type permit. But I'm thinking, how do, how do you realistically try to deal with this? And I think the only way to deal with it is, is to, again, look at the circumstances underneath it, have people have that ability to deal with it and have, have the ability, if it's still not right, to be able to get back at it as opposed to a one-and-done process. That's just my initial reaction. Someone else may have a much better idea for doing this. But I, I think that if you want to be responsible to the community and also to the homeowner, this is the best way to deal with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to go to John Kitchener and Howard Campbell Sutton and then Veeth again. Okay. John, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm not going to repeat everything that Barry just laid out, but I do support his point of view that in the real world, a special permit is probably the only way to, to do this, you know? Thinking of anything that looks like a ban, you know, a one-size-fits-all ban is, I think, a non-starter. And I think that this is a good example of where, you know, the special permit process allows this board to bring common sense to, you know, the applications that come before us. And that is what we should be able to do. And I would support what Barry had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitchener.
I think in the, if I may, Leslie, kind of suggest what I think you're understanding, my understanding of what you're trying to accomplish was just to put something in front of the community to understand what the community feels about it in a town meeting sort of way. And I, I think there's real value in that because whether it's a special permit or not, the planning board does need to understand what the community thinks about it. And I admire that. I think that, I think that's a really good thing. I think you may all remember that, you know, Barry, you gave the same speech in the executive session and then you waffled and you said, okay, I see the value in this. And you saw the value in it because doing nothing was worse than not, than, than trying to see here what Leslie and her staff can accomplish in front of the town, not necessarily to get a ban or to get anything improved, but to find out what the waters look like. So you need to, you need to recall that. I think a special permit is a really nice idea. I think we've seen through some of the pool permit requests that, that people have said that we've been arbitrary and capricious. And I think you're going to get into. And I think you're going to get into a huge sticky wicket, arbitrary and capricious on something as ridiculous as who cannot build a pickleball court on their property. I think that what it speaks to is either you do something correctly, which is applicable and general enough that it works for people, or you don't do anything else. But you're gonna, a special permit is just something that is going to create a whole lot of arbitrary and capricious charges. And then finally, you said you could reopen the special permit. I think you can't do that. If you award someone, and I'm not a lawyer, but if you award somebody a special permit, they have an as-of right to continue to use the property as you gave them a permit to do so. But, you know, that would be for Leslie to answer.
Leslie, please.
We've included language in special permits before, but I believe primarily, if not entirely, for commercial projects that had significant conditions attached to them, saying if, you know, there are complaints from neighbors and you're not operating in accordance with the special permit, then we reserve the right to reopen and have additional conversations. So I don't know how it would work in this instance. That would be something to explore. But the board has done that before with commercial projects.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. I'm going to go online to Campbell Sutton. Welcome, Campbell.
Let me hear you. This is my big question.
Campbell, you're trying to be, there you go. Welcome.
So in this whole conversation, I have a couple of things that I wanted to say was I really appreciated this article being put forward. I don't do pickleball, but I love the learning curve that could be had with this, where you have, you know, for town meeting's sake, where you have something that's so restrictive. It really is an example of how you can broaden or, you know, create less restriction versus, you know, having it less restrictive, and then people want to make it more restrictive, but you can't do that. Just quickly, I just thought that was great. But more specifically, as I've heard you guys talk, so I think it was last night, it's like board meeting. It was put out that it's 70 decibels at 100 feet. Now, I do believe that that's considered damaging, right? Over 10 minutes. So there are laws, whether it's OSHA or the like. I know when I was looking at doing the pool noise ordinance for the equipment, that there is, there are decibel levels above which, for 10 minutes, it is considered damaging to the ears. And I'm thinking 70 decibels at 100 feet in R5, you're totally in not just the next guard, but the person after that. So I think someone needs to look into that piece as far as the noise that Jill Beeth was saying, just noise. It's not, not all noise is just noise. The other piece, very quickly, is I know all affected was, you know, my parameters around pools, you know, 20 feet from the lot line or that kind of thing. I think that, well, if you guys want to go down some of the alleys that I'm hearing about, you know, if you just create some parameters about how far it has to be from a lot line, that in and of itself determines whether a lot can have it. And it really moves you away from the arbitrary and capricious piece that I've heard discussed. So I'm just going to put that out there, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much, Campbell. Okay, welcome back, Jill Beeth.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just still trying to understand. I appreciate all y'all's comments, and I know that you're not trying to like, you know, get rid of pickleball, but your bylaw does say that? And what I'm hearing is that you want to regulate a multi-sport court or any kind of slab for that matter. And that's what I'm trying to understand from you. Like, what is it that you're trying to do? Because you keep identifying pickleball. Well, people play hockey on them, they play volleyball, they play pop tennis, you know. It's on and on. A lot of people have put these multi-sport courts in, but these courts are huge. I mean, I can't imagine they're going to fit in R5. But, you know, the other issue with it I might just bring up for you, though, that has come up a few times, is maybe just people wanting to have a kind of backboard. And they have backboards that accommodate pickleball and tennis and padel, which is, tennis and padel balls are quieter. But, and then they can change the net heights because they are different. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. Like, is that also a problem? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jill. Those are all very good points. And now, we just heard, when I was on the CPC, it was a land bank talking about the new sport of padel and that coming, and they were going to try and switch to that direction. It is growing faster, to Nat's point, is pickleball a fad? There's another one on the horizon. So I think you bring up good points. And then we're going to go to online to Ms. Charity Benz. Welcome back, Charity.
Thank you. I'm just offering a helpful comment from my work experience. If you're going to be looking at noise, there are three conditions that you look at. One is the frequency. In other words, how often it happens. The intensity of the noise and the duration of the noise. So if anybody's looking into that, it may be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, commissioners, do you want to break it down? Or, I mean, the one thing that I did mention, that the last time we did a pool restriction, there was a race to get pooled in. And I am of the mindset that we need to do something, whether it's sports court or something.
It's written that way.
But I do feel that this is coming and not doing anything, you know, horrific. Leslie, do you have some to add?
So the prohibition on swimming pools, I think, was very well-known. And people were aware of it before the publication of the notice came out, which in this case, the notice has been published, so you're not eligible to get a use permit for pickleball court at this point in time until town meeting votes. I think there's, you know, been a lot of discussion tonight, and it sounds like a prohibition across all zoning districts is probably not what the board wants to do. I think between now and your next meeting, whatever that is, maybe February 6th. Well, I know there's one on the 30th, but I was thinking the 6th would give us a little more time.
Which is starting at 9:00 AM now.
Yeah, exactly. That we could come up with some ideas to present to you now that we've heard, you know, your points of view and from the public as well.
So my wife went to one of those table talks that you were recommending and did that. She said it was very informative, but the one thing was, you know, cart before the horse, et cetera. And I do think that, I'm going to kind of go out there and say, recommend that the special permit come before the HTC. We kind of deal with that, then they go to the HTC. I think we should set that up. You know, we get the first grab, bite of the apple. That way, we kind of control at least some area that that could be placed. And then from there, zone out to the HTC, working on the finer details as well. Peter, welcome.
Good evening. Franz Arts, representing the Carol Bean Merrill Trust of 158 Maticat Road. Unfortunately, my neighbor at 156 Maticat Road has already gotten approval to turn their very quiet, peaceful property into an STR filled with swimming pools, hot tubs, and now pickleball. After being on a first-name basis with the neighbors of 160 Maticat Road and 154 Maticat Road, all of us are opposed to it. And the family at 156 Maticat Road, which has already gotten your approval, has done exactly what we're talking about here tonight. And they have shoved this pickleball court over towards the property line. And now the property line from Maticat Road is about 200 to 250 feet deep. And they've shoved it within 50 feet of the property line, which is going to affect at least two of the three other properties on the road. And, you know, we talk about the pickleball. Pickleball decibels are upwards of 100 decibels compared to tennis, which is like 50 decibels. So it's twice as loud. And they've done this strictly because they want to attract more STRs at, I don't know, 50,000 a week. And they've taken a nice, quiet set of properties, being four lots, and it's lugged to. And they've completely destroyed the quality of life because of the noise. Now, don't get me wrong, it has not been constructed yet, but we're anticipating problems from this property, which is going to do nothing for the neighborhood except for the three other properties where we're all in cahoots together. And, you know, the property owners who brought this and got approval, they never spoke with anybody, as for the neighbors, to let them know what they're going to do. Now, it's, you know, it's 156 Disney. And this is the type of thing that, what they've already done is annoy the neighbors. And now with the pickleball, it's going to send the three property owners over the edge. And it's going to become a problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, this was something that the HTC, I did watch this application. It was contentious between the board members. So that's another reason why we're doing what we're doing. So thank you. I guess we'll go back online to Ms. Meredith Lepri. Welcome back.
Hey, guys, it's actually Matt Peel.
Hey, man.
And don't feel bad, Nat. Mary makes me sigh, too, so. Anyway, I just want to make Nat feel a bit better. I was just going to mention, so with these courts, I would just recommend that you guys do it all as a whole, as far, don't just segregate pickleball courts. Because what people are going to do is, I would do is just sport courts in general and then create, you know, minimum lot size setbacks, all that other stuff. I don't, there may already be for sport courts. But what people are going to do is say, oh, we're not putting in a pickleball court. We're putting in a tennis court. And then they can play pickleball on it. And then what are you going to do? Are you going to call the pickleball police? And so it's just same thing that's, you know, going to happen or that's happening now with people trying to put in water features instead of hot tubs in the historic district. And so, and I think it'd be good if you guys align this with the pools and hot tubs with the historic district as well, as far as possibly, you know, banning them in historic districts, which I don't know if they already are or not, sorry. So, but I would just recommend to the board that you guys just put sport courts as a whole, you know, add the definition of pickleball in there, and then just keep it all as one. Then there's not any confusion on it, and you guys are doing a, you know, a general set, maybe with minimum sizes or something. I don't know. It's your guys' department, but that'd be my suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Nat. Board members?
I just have a, I just actually brought up something I was thinking of. Well, Matt did. So we got Jill on, who's, I don't want to say a pickleball expert, but she certainly knows more than we do. Is there a size, like, different size pickleball court? Like, I don't know. Are they all the same? Like, basketball court, a professional court is X number of feet, but like, you don't have to have one. I don't know what that means, Joe. Is there such a thing? There's a small pickleball court? See, I don't know.
There is a standard, and they are smaller. And they're about the size, I believe, of platform tennis surface. So there used to be a.
I was, oh, the one at Don, those were the first.
I know, but I'm just, that was my bet.
Yeah. I just didn't know. And I mean, we need to have, I mean, I know this sounds insane, but we have consultants everywhere for everything now. Maybe we need, like, to have a professional, somebody that can understand pickleball better than just us making up stuff and thinking what's going to happen, what isn't happening. But he's saying, I could take what this gentleman just said and flip it to other things from the past. You know, it's all about outdoor living. It doesn't matter if they're renting their house or not. They could have all their friends down for the weekend and do the same thing. I'm just saying, you can't get into that part. We have to get into lifestyles outside. I mean, what if it was plastic hockey, you know, rink in people's yards? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's loud.
The roller hockey thing was fad for 10 minutes until 2003.
When you built a rink.
I know, that's why I said 2003. So, or 2002, whatever. So, the thing out of Tom Nevers is still sitting there. So I just don't want to go too far, but I don't want to go not far enough. We have to figure out a balance. This is like the first time we've ever really looked at something like that. Kind of like before, I don't want to say before it comes a problem, but before, we don't have any rules for this. They do have to go to HTC, but we don't have any, like, regulation for this at all, right? Am I correct? And what Matt said about the other.
Sports court.
Sports court thing, is that all true, like, the way that's written now? Because I don't have any idea about that.
Any sports court now has to meet setbacks. That's it.
Okay, so adding this into whatever the other stuff is, obviously is the right thing, right?
Well, it would have to meet setbacks, like all other game courts, but this would be applying, if you want to, additional standards.
Right, no, I don't mean that. I'm saying, is it even in there now? I think that's what I meant to ask, sorry.
We just have a generic term, game courts.
Okay, okay.
But if someone asked, and this is where labeling of a plan is critical.
Right.
If they called it a sports court, but then all of a sudden a pickleball court is constructed, we could go, say, you're in violation.
That's what the gentleman said.
That's what I just wanted.
That's right.
Yeah, confirm what he was saying, because I agree with that.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? We'll go to Jill Beeth.
Jill, welcome back again.
Hey, sorry, thanks. Yes, the courts are, they're huge. They're 33 by 60, and you really, if I was you, you don't need to get a consultant. I'm happy to talk to you, but Charlie Pelaki knows a ton, and he'll share all his knowledge with you. He just did the courts at Jetty's. It's basically half of a tennis court. It's very big. But unfortunately, you can play it on any flat surface. So again, I think you're coming back to a noise, and that's what I want to tell you. Because what I'm hearing, you're saying pickleball, and I'm thinking sport court, right? That can, that a lot of things can be played on. And I don't know how you're going to differentiate that. So that's really my concern, you know.
Thank you, that.
That's it.
You brought up a very good point. And we need to look at all the definitions. I think that's kind of critical in what we need to do.
Yeah, and also, can I just add? I highly recommend, I need to get the planning board out to play pickleball, it sounds like. So that would be great if you guys want to do a field trip to NRSA and play and see what it's all about, and you can hear the noise. And we are going to build, and we're building padel out there, too. So that's a quieter sport. It has glass panels. The ball is different, so it's quieter. But the glass panels are really interesting addition. Again, Charlie knows a lot of this stuff. It's just the glass panels are really expensive. It's like $100,000 a court or more.
No, and we hear that, and that's, I think, a very critical piece. But the other part of that is, you know, once this language was crafted, I would like that staff, you know, when they're sending us, to pass it on to Charlie. You would get involved, I mean, make a little commission. Everyone weigh in. The other part I was saying in the last meeting, if there was, you know, two pickleball courts that, there's buffers between each of them because I feel like that, you know, say, it's 30 feet wide and all of a sudden becomes 60 feet wide, that all of a sudden that noise buffer becomes wider. And that's the other part, is what are the details? And, you know, I think that every place that has a pickleball court, and I was just saying on the St. Croix, they're popping up down there, but they are on the side of the road, on the highway, so there's nothing around. But it is everywhere. And it is kind of amazing that people are playing, and I like that. And that's not what I'm trying to stop. But I definitely think it is a noise. And to Campbell's point, I don't think it's so much offensive to the ears as it is to the mindset of going back and forth. I think it would be, you know, a game being played for an hour would be slow torture. So I just think that's what we're trying to mitigate and get ahead of. So I do think the language, you know, if we can have something prepared by the 6th, is that correct, not a problem? But just to kind of recap.
But, just to kind of recap, I just think special permit, sound advice, you know, maybe have the, I know that Matt was talking about newer paddles are out and balls, maybe restrict that, zoning 40, R40 and up, and the design and detailing. And then, I think distance from a house, a dwelling, not so much a lot line, but in Pete's point, that is a long, narrow lot that he was talking about. So they're damned either way, even if it's right up against us. But that's where we need to kind of look at that, and with a special permit, so that's my thoughts. Anyone else?
Just something I'll share with staff and stuff, and you, it's, I'm just kind of doing some online research here at the moment. You've got to love this, there is a retired engineer who has come up with his own company called Pickleball Sound Mitigation LLC. But that should tell you something. That should tell you something right there. And it really isn't just, it's not so much the decibel, strangely enough, it's the frequency, it's conduct. There's the key. Just real quick, I'll just excerpt from you very quickly. Pickleball has a very high frequency in the range of 1.2 kilohertz. So every time that ball hits, it's a 1.2 kilohertz sound.
Just what I was thinking, kilohertz.
Now, according to this same guy, he said, it's the most annoying of all frequencies. It catches your attention. But you've got to remember, one of the beautiful things about sound is, it's not, it's not something that's static even between here and the end of the auditorium. Every time we move a foot away, the quantity of the whole thing changes.
Density.
Decibel, yeah, right. It's, I think it's 1 equals d over cube of the distance.
You just nerd out on us.
I've been doing this, I've been doing these kind of things for a while. I did, I did take a lot of physics courses, so I'm going to go back to things, but it's...
Well done.
But this is what I'm saying to you, is that I, there's an opportunity here too, that I think there's an opportunity to kind of dial in on this by looking at it with where it's located and what's going on.
And let the kilohertz, it'll fix itself.
It will probably, you know, what's strange...
Kind of makes some sense.
Strangely enough, it'll begin to fix some of these things, like we've talked about with technology and stuff, they begin to fix themselves over time. I mean, but it, I find this fascinating, that this has become such a widespread phenomenon.
And contentious issue.
So, and, oh, yeah, but, you know, the sport is definitely growing. It's the second most populous sport besides running at this point. But again, today's, today's pickleball court will become tomorrow's paddle court.
Tennis courts. I'm in the 80s, 90s, I'm never doing permits.
Oh, you're so retro.
I know, but they're now doing...
No, I know, I know, I know.
So...
But that's all. It's just, it's something unfortunately, we're having to address in the short term here, the long-term solution may be a whole different thing. And, you know, 10 years from now, what we're really hyper focusing on may not even be a problem anymore. But here we are, and I think we're faced with having to deal with it, and what I think is, how do we, how do we try to find, try to come up with some type of thing that really becomes a middle ground for everyone? Or come as close as we can and realize with, with the whole thing, we'll, we'll have to fine tune as we go with this as well, too.
I agree.
And that's, fine tuning, to me, always, at least from a planning perspective, goes back to that whole special.
And I think that each permit that comes forward, we'll be able to kind of realize what mistakes or problems are...
Oh, absolutely. I think, yeah, for everyone that'll come in, I think we'll be able to dial in behind it and say, okay, what, what did we learn from this?
Correct.
Yeah.
Barry just made me think, I read an article about that same engineer on NPR, and I think it was in a list of articles that I asked Megan to send around to you all last week. And there's also a study in there that's done by, who I've heard described online as like the premier acoustical engineer for this particular type of noise, that was done for a city or a town in Colorado. And you can sort of skip the 70-page document, but at the end, he talks about some mitigation measures that that particular town may want to consider, so I thought that might have some applicability. I mean, it's Colorado, they probably have a lot more land to deal with, but could give you some ideas. Yeah, and there's some articles from the Cape about impacts to properties.
No, thank you, Megan, for sending those, because they were great. And Dave has shared something with me, which is great as well.
All right, board members, what are you going to do?
I probably, if, I'm kind of picking up from the board, that the best thing to do is kind of move this out to the 6th, the meeting on the 6th. Give us a little bit more time to work on it, and even on the 6th, we may have to come back one more time and look at it, but give us a little opportunity to start.
Can I just, can I just ask a staff question?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Acting?
Before we go, continue.
Actor.
Oh.
Leslie and Megan, you guys, so, are we looking to, I mean, just, let's just say we go to town meeting and, with something definitive, are we looking to bring this into a special permit for us or for ZBA beyond the HDC approval? Like, is that what we're doing?
I think the article is drafted for a zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, zoning board of appeals. I mean, it's more of a neighbor-to-neighbor issue, not a broader planning issue, other than I think it's broad in the sense that the planning board should identify it, but I think when it comes down to, you know, notifying abouters and getting input and coming up with conditions, I think that's more of a zoning board of appeals role.
And I'm going back to VR, before the MMD insanity, which, you know, they better allow them out there because there's plenty of land. But anyway, the, I'm looking at the VR thing kind of as this, a little bit, like, but it would be island-wide in that regard, where there can be direction for ZBA so that the HDC isn't doing all the work. Because that's kind of what I'm hearing is happening, correct, Joe? I mean, they're dick out of acting as the whole package for this.
The HDC is, they are the ones that are taking the brunt.
Yeah. And...
And if I can just add, that's part of the reason why I thought that we should discuss this, because, you know, people who are opposed to HDC applications have come in to talk with us to see, you know, what can we ask them to do, what kind of mitigation? And it's like, well, they're really only supposed to be looking at the exterior architectural features that are visible from a public way, private way, blah, 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 blah. Not neighbor impacts. But, you know, that was really their only venue.
Yeah. And I do agree with Joe on the R40. I was kind of teetering around with R20. But there's a lot of R20 that's not really R20. It's kind of big.
Well, it's even a lot shape.
I just don't know what the answer is. We could also get into, I don't know if we should get into lot size and all that kind of stuff, I don't know about that.
Well, it's lot shape, I was saying.
We'll work on something. We'll try to refine this a bit.
You know, we used to have R20 at Hummock Pond, all the way to the beach, so I don't know where, there's a lot of R20, though, Vesper, Hummock Pond Road, that's not really like R20 in the sense of other R20.
So, I'm thinking I'm going to go to Kathy Ward and then ask for continuance. Kathy Ward, welcome back.
Thank you. I just want to agree with Barry. I think that if, if you go special permit, that would be great. And just a little chuckle here, I think it's the graying of America. All of us who are older now are not as agile, and that's why pickleball rather than tennis. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're right behind you, don't worry. Two by twos. All right, Barry?
All right. I'll make, I'm going to make a motion at this point. We defer this to our next meeting on February...
Six.
Six, yeah.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so moving on to upcoming meetings, we're just going to read these out for anyone who's still watching. Special meetings, we have Thursday, January 3rd, Thursday, February 6th, that's 4:00 PM, that's a hybrid. Monday, February 10th, at 4:00 PM, that's also a hybrid. And then Thursday, March 6th, 4:00 PM, that is remote only, just FYI. So, anyone else?
If I could just add, so the meeting for next Thursday, the 30th, is 4:00 PM and hybrid as well. That is going to be the continued discussion of any citizen articles that we did not, or that you did not take action on at the last meeting. It also includes two planning board-sponsored articles, a technical amendment for secondary dwellings, and then a bylaw provision for solar energy dealing with some definitions. So that, that's what you can expect to see, and I'll try and, I'll try my best to get that posted tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anyone?
Jerry?
Say.
Barry, any motion? Nat, any motion, sorry?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Thank you to the staff and to the public, this was very informative and very helpful. Everyone take care, good night.
Thanks, everyone.